Session October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Uh Chair Shound is in another meeting today. So as Vice Chair, I'll run the meeting. Please silence or shut off your cell phones if you would and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, we have one addition for the agenda today.
We do see how they named Rat Green.
Okay. So with that, we'll go right into the nine AM Lake County School District seven update. Sean?
Okay.
And it's Jenna?
Jenna.
Want to come join us here?
Yeah, you gotta get in the hot seat.
I'd like to introduce Jenna Mills, she's our new business manager for the district. And I brought her here specifically to talk about the lot line adjustment. And I know that she's been a part of that project. Just brought a copy of our proposal we gave to commissioners. I know that Jenna's in contact with Mr. Berman. So I'm gonna let her kind of run the show here in terms of where we're at. Where are we at Jenna?
Well, I would just preface for the audience that the lot line adjustment is at the school district office and it's to accommodate some parking up against the railroad property.
Yes, yes, it is. And if you look at on the map on the back part of that handout, simply just to, it's kinda hard to tell from that map, but it's a matter of just aligning what was already been kind of put in place years ago and just kind of cleaning things up. And so, from what I understand, the request has been only to redo some fencing, is that correct, Mr. Berman?
Yes.
And I think the request is that we look at splitting the cost, is that from what I understand?
Yeah, well, what we kinda wanna do is go in together as we get whatever covers your area, the school district there, and then we wanna go down with the fence along with the old fences and just combine it all together and get one solid bit so we can fix our fence where it just blends into your guys' fence and it's all all done, so that's what I propose.
So we'll need to look at the cost and what all entails, and it depends like, I think we're moving forward with that.
Yeah, I think what the county wants to do is when you have your fence contractor in there, then we could tie on clean and park part at the same time.
Right.
Sort of say both of those costs and just one move, de-move.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So I guess is it up to us to contact?
I think that's where we were, we left it on Friday, I think is when we talked.
It was just still in the air, we hadn't really turned it through.
Yeah, hadn't got, I mean, we don't have any estimates, we just, him and I just visited on Friday, so hopefully, hopefully this week I can get to that.
Do we have a type of fence that we're considering?
Maybe a cyclone.
It kinda matches what's already around the school district now. What I propose or what we've talked about.
We've cyclone fencing around Busch, you're already in, so it's very nicely without, if I match the height then, so it's a set. So we'll take a look at that and keep you updated.
Okay, let's take about three rounds, stick around.
Don't raise your wire at the top, no. Just kidding, just a joke. Okay, um with that, couple of the things. One is there was a public release of the new uh school district report cards this last week. And so if you want to see all the report cards, you can certainly go to Oregon Department of Education website and download report cards per school, but I brought the district report card. And there's some very interesting information in here that I thought commissioners might be interested in knowing. Uh first of all, you see a kind of a message from me is in terms of highlighting how we did on the report cards. We had Fremont and Hayey Elementary rated out as a level three last year out of a five level rating system. And uh they were able to increase their rating to level four. And then LHS is still at a four and a five in the different categories that they're at and which are some of the very highest ratings in the state for high school. So, you know, it's always difficult to, because we were a solid level five last year for LHS, um it's always difficult to maintain that that top, the very highest rating, but still we're right there, right at a four and a five. And uh some of the uh data there, as you see on district profile, you kinda see a breakdown for total enrollment. This was in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And what I did is I brought our chart, our famous chart that we like to share with everybody that we updated. And this is an enrollment chart historical since nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight school year.
That's a good year, sixty-six.
Yes, it was, yeah, sixty-six was a good year and so on and on, but sixty-seven, sixty-eight is. And uh kinda shows the the trend of our enrollment. But if you look at the bottom right-hand corner, we have a slight uptick there. And we went from about, oh, I do believe it was seven hundred and fifty students and we're at seven sixty-three right now. And so we've seen a slight increase overall. And also keep in mind, this is a snapshot in time. Throughout the course of the school year, it's normal for any school district to have fluctuations as people move in and out. And what we're paid on is the average enrollment over the course of an entire school year. And that's how the the state reimburses school districts in that capacity. Um so back to the report card. Under student mobility, I think you can see that we have a small percentage of students that transfer into the school district as well as out of the district. A large percentage of that has to do with Modoc Joint Unified School District in Alteris. And we have that State Line Elementary School right in this southern part of New Pine Creek. And so oftentimes, it just makes more sense for families that live on the north side of the Oregon border in New Pine Creek to send their elementary child to that State Line School, because it's just a few blocks away as opposed to fifteen or so miles to our our school district. So that's where we get the majority, but you know, we do have transfer students from Bligh. Um we also serve all the secondary needs for Adele and Plush. Occasionally, we may have a student or two from Paisley area. And occasionally, we get students on the secondary side that are coming up north out of uh Modoc Joint Unified because it's actually closer for them to come to Lakeview High School than it is to Alteris High School. So we do have some ability there. Uh I get this question asked all the time in terms of demographics. That's a great uh breakdown of the percent of English language learners in terms of the grouping of grades K through three, four to five, six through eight, nine through twelve. Um those percentages have actually increased a little bit over time. Um also, our economic disadvantage, those have significantly increased over time, especially during the recession period. Our student with disabilities, um that has also grown, that population. And uh it's important to keep in mind that the state and the feds only give us extra reimbursement for up to eleven percent of our disabled students. And you can see some very high figures there, up close to even twenty percent.
Can you elaborate on disability as a broad term?
It's a very broad term.
And is it just learning behind the sketcher, or is it?
The majority of your disabled students are, have IEPs in the the learning disabled realm. I have an IEP in reading or mathematics or maybe attention deficit disorder or something of that nature. That's the majority of your students. And the IEP process allows for extra help. Uh sometimes we'll assign aides to them. Um there's also accommodations that we make in the IEP process to help them along. Uh and then probably the the small majority of your disabled students are probably your highest costs and those are the ones that maybe they're wheelchair bound or maybe they have some level of mental retardation or something of that nature, which of course, we infuse with a lot more resources to help those students along in the process. Uh also, there's some demographics there in terms of the number of different languages spoken. Uh two languages, K through eight, and then at the high school, we actually have four languages that are spoken. Don't ask me to elaborate which four, I don't remember off the top of my head.
But we are encouraging bilingual?
Yes, yes, we have a very strong uh English language learner program, K through twelve. And we have dedicated staff to that program. And those staff are helping all of our English language learners, no matter what their language is as they come in and integrate with the schools.
Do we have a strong program to have English-speaking only children?
You know, the goal is always with no matter what program we're dealing with, the goal is to always have fluency in English. And so sometimes we might get a model lingual coming in from a foreign country that just, you know, freshly moved in. And it could be, it could be, uh you know, south of the border, they're Spanish speaking, or it could be China or Taiwan or wherever they come from. And again, the the program, the ELL program, K through twelve, is designed to first of all, figure out what level of language fluency they have in English. And then to progress them towards becoming fluent in the English language. And the goal is, has been set by the state and the federal government for a five-year period of time. So after five years, they're saying, hey, we expect that these students are fluent in the English language and are able to pretty much take care of themselves academically in the classroom, verbally as they they speak and elaborate with others. And so, yeah, that is the rule.
My question was for the fluently English-only.
Oh.
We have a strong emphasis to get a second language?
Yes, we do. In fact, that's that's oftentimes a requirement for entrance into college. And you'll see some demographics here that show we have a very strong college presence. And yeah, so we have a lot of students taking foreign language, yeah. Um if you look under the second column, there's the student wellness policy, that's just a link to our wellness policy. Uh I get asked a question all the time in terms of average class size. And K through three, it was twenty-two point nine, grades four through five, it was twenty-one point eight. And according to my calculations, at the secondary level, it's below twenty, well below twenty uh in terms of our average class size. So we have great class sizes. Um that those those figures have actually increased by a couple of percentage points in the last few years, mainly because of the economic recession as we've had to cut back on staffing. But we are building back those staff as the budgets are restored. If you look at our teacher proficiency, I always struggle with that nomenclature because um it says percentage of highly qualified teachers as defined by the federal government. It's a very narrow criteria that they use. And it's awful difficult for a small rural school district to maintain a hundred percent because oftentimes, we need our teachers to teach multiple subjects. And they may not have multiple endorsements or licenses to cover all those subjects. And so we're stuck with the decision, gee, if we don't have a highly qualified teacher in this particular subject, we either lose the program or we just take the risk and say, we'll just take the hit on the highly qualified aspect. So I think you can see that that we have decided to to favor programs over the highly qualified piece. And that's why we have a ninety-two point three percent rating. But I can assure you, we have very highly qualified staff. You look at the next page. District profile, that just shows you a bunch of colored pie charts in terms of the ethnic diversity of our our school district. And I think you can see we have a large percentage of Hispanic population, but we also have some influence from American Indian. Also, there's some uh Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, Asian, also some Black influence in there, multiracial. And then you can see that they like to compare that with your ethnic diversity of your staffing. And I've gotta say that that oftentimes, we don't see a very wide range of ethnic diversity in our application pool. And that's one of the areas that we try and recruit in, but and I I gotta say that most school districts are struggling in that area. We certainly do try and and try and match our ethnic diversity best we can with our staff and students. If you look at the next page, um that's a whole lot of data, a whole lot of numbers. And if I was to summarize this page, you've got reading, mathematics, writing, and science. Science is really one of those non-accountability areas, it's just reported, it's not really held in terms of accountability scales. But it breaks each of those categories down into either Black, which is did not meet, Gray, which is met, or White is exceeded. So if you look at the right, the far right, two columns, you see Oregon performance and then like, I'm sorry. Look at the column that says district performance, the third from the right, and compare it with the like district average the furthest to the right. And those are probably the numbers you wanna compare the most. Like for instance, I'm looking at students grades three through through five. I'm looking at the gray cell for the district performance, we have fifty-nine point three percent in reading. And then like district average is forty-two point three percent. You can find that trend throughout the district. We're very strong in our academics, especially as you compare us with other like districts. And that's probably in a nutshell how I would summarize that page. Although with the new federal requirements and standards, this is kind of a moving target. And it always hasn't been set, and so that's one of the frustrations oftentimes, is they keep moving the line. And but we're working to try and make sure we accommodate and bring our staff up to speed on on the uh the updates and the changes. If you look at the next page, it's probably a little more exciting in places. Like for instance, in college and career readiness, at the very top there. If you look at freshmen on track to graduate within four years, that's one of the areas that the state is really focusing on as one of the indicators. At the end of the freshman year, how many freshmen, what percent of freshmen do you have on track to graduate? And uh our district performance in thirteen, fourteen was eighty-four point six percent. And like district average is eighty point three percent. So we're right there, we're right where we need to be. And then oftentimes, what happens, then then the other programs kick in and we help those students get caught back up. And uh that's a common trend. Oftentimes, there's a little bit of transition for students going from middle school to high school. It's a new level, it's a new level of academics, a new level of expectations, a little bit of transition there. So that's why that is such an important indicator for the state to be maintaining. Also, if you look at students taking the SAT, um this is something we've always been high in. We're at forty-one point four percent, and that has been as high as sixty-plus percent I've seen in other years. Um like for instance, in twelve thirteen, it was sixty-two point seven percent. In eleven twelve, it was sixty point three percent. And that fluctuates just based upon the the class of students. But look at the comparison for like district average of twenty-eight point seven percent. What that tells me is that you have a very strong college going culture on average. And uh sometimes, um we we take it in shorts in terms of our average SAT test scores. We don't look that good because we are testing the masses. We're trying to encourage them to move on to college. A lot of that incentive is as a result of the daily scholarship fund, the Collins McDonald scholarships, which are great incentives for us. Also, if you look at graduation rate, um you can see there were eighty-one point four percent and a like district average is sixty-three point four percent. Uh the completion rate is something that I will look at because the four-year graduation rate is pretty stringent. In other words, it's the percentage of students that graduate with a regular diploma in four years. It doesn't take into account your GEDs, it doesn't take into account your modified diplomas, or any of those students that have to come back for that fifth year because there might have been some traumatic event that happened during their high school years and they kinda got behind. But if you look at the completion rate, and that's uh the completion after five years, we're at ninety-eight point three percent versus like district average is seventy-one point four percent. That's something we're very, very proud of. We don't give up on our students. And there's sometimes other districts, after four years, they say, well, you're on your own. Yet we don't. We wanna make sure there's programs in place. They either come back to school, we finish what they're doing, we get them enrolled in GED program, they can now enroll in the ILC. The Innovative Learning Center with KCC. Um there's lots of different options available to our students. Dropout rate, uh we have a slight uptick there. And we're up at two point two percent, where like district average is four point eight percent. We're making uh efforts right now to get that back down to what we would like to see zero percent like we've seen in the past few years. Also, continuing education, um this is a new factor. And it, the the data is pulled from what is called the National Student Clearinghouse. And it's the students who enrolled at a community college or four-year school within sixteen months of graduation. This is probably the the factor that we have the most raised eyebrows at in terms of the accuracy. Because we we're small enough that we go through and we talk to each and every student, we know where they have enrolled at. And we're talking to the National Student Clearinghouse right now because the data that they're sending us is not accurate. So we don't feel that the fifty-seven point nine percent is accurate at all. We think it's more in the seventy to eighty percentile range from our data. And so we're looking at that discrepancy right now versus like district averages at sixty percent.
On that, that's within sixteen months after?
Yes, yes, within sixteen.
What's a factor of military enrollment?
You know, uh they, the National Student Clearinghouse does not factor that in, which I don't necessarily agree with. I think there's a lot of training that every person that goes in the military enrolls in. And I would like to see that factored into us, but you can defer it. But uh at this point, they don't count, they don't count in the military.
Even the fifty-seven point nine, it's it's still higher than the Oregon performance.
Oh, yeah.
You've been comparing to like districts, I've been looking at the Oregon performance all the way through here. And everything, we're pretty much, you're pretty much higher than the Oregon performance on everything.
We are, we are.
And and you know those numbers aren't accurate and you're still, and you're still better than the Oregon.
We are, we are. And so, you know, overall, I gotta say that I'm very proud of what we're able to accomplish. Um there's certainly changes that come our direction and uh but we've got a strong enrollment, we have a strong teaching staff. Uh lots of new staff this year. I think we've made about twenty-six hires since last spring on all different areas of the district, whether it's teachers or classified aides or secretaries or district office level personnel. And we've hired some very, very strong people and doing some exceptional jobs right now for our district.
On the Howard, do you emphasize within state of Oregon and if so, west side, east side, or gecko national?
We try and advertise for certified positions on a national basis, but our main focus is the Pacific Northwest, particularly Oregon. But there's oftentimes, we'll advertise in Washington, Idaho, Montana, California, Nevada. One of our hires this year came from Wisconsin. Another hire came directly out of China. Um so, but I would say the majority of our hires are from the the state of Oregon. And also in terms of teacher licensure, it's it's pretty difficult for somebody who has an out-of-state licensure to bring their licensure into Oregon for teaching. And oftentimes, we see that's kind of a deterrent to attracting teachers out of the state. Uh but we do, we do advertise on a national basis.
I'm just thinking, the reason I ask that is we're very real, and it's hard, maybe hard to get somebody out of Portland, Eugene, whatever. But it could be easier or like geographic area, either Montana or, you know, wherever.
Yeah, yeah, some of the best hires I've I've made have been out of Montana or eastern Oregon or central Oregon because, you know, they understand the the culture and the area a little bit better. And there's been a few people that have come from kind of metropolitan areas, it's a little bit of a cultural shock for a little bit, but they learn within six months whether they can adapt or not.
Yep.
And uh so far, so good with this year's banker hires. We had a slack burner last year.
Just looking at your back page, elementary schools' extracurricular activities.
Uh huh.
I I would think that four H would fit on there also under the elementary school.
Yes, yes, I think it would.
Because a four H, you know, it goes from hard tree to livestock to sewing, cooking, all kinds of things. There's just one more thing to show that we have a lot of activities here.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. It certainly would fit. And I've gotta say, the community's really stepped up also, and this list doesn't really come close to all the community different, different community programs that the community is sponsoring. So, yeah, there is a lot of things for kids to get involved in.
We just touched on the swim team, there's, it's just.
Yeah.
That sometimes we think some of the kids don't have time to be kids, because there's so many things. But, um, yeah, it's enlightening to look at that and see the opportunities that the kids have.
And just with our school sponsored programs at the high school level, we have like sixty-five or seventy percent of our student body out for sports and activities just this fall alone, which is incredible. That's what we wanna see. Uh you compare that with other high schools, you don't see those higher percentages.
That's good physical activity.
It's great, it's great to keep the kid involved and keep him active and focused on on those sorts of things.
I'm particularly interested in the soccer, the soccer program, because it's an international sport. How's that coming along?
Uh it's coming very, very well. This year, we had two soccer teams, a strong boys' team and a girls' team. In fact, our boys' team is ranked some of the highest in the state right now at a particular level. And so we're we're anticipating some playoffs with boys' soccer. And also, I know the AYSO program, uh students that are below high school, I do believe, last count I had was like hundred ninety students that are involved in that program. There's a lot. And uh we're still working on the soccer field. Um I'm waiting on some final budget figures from Anderson Engineering and the Lakeview Rotary Club on that as to where we are, because we have, we brought all the the top soil in, we've got the irrigation installed, we've got the the field leveled. And uh we're still waiting to see where we're at with the final budget. We're probably gonna be looking at either seeding or sodding in the spring. And uh and we're also wanting to install some fencing, we'll have to put in some sidewalks, uh some other infrastructure type things to get that facility up and going. So lots of activity going on. Um next summer, we're also gonna be on the other half of that, that vacant lot next to the district office, we're gonna be installing a solar project, so that'll be going on. We're probably moving the greenhouse from that location over to the, between the high school and the middle school. So it's much more accessible, we're hoping to hook that up with geothermal heat, so it's a lot cheaper heat. Um we just made our our, I think, like our sixth grant application for seismic retrofits. And this particular grant is for DMS Southway, uh which will include the entire Southway, the band choir room, the auditorium. And we were just approved that grant application last night, and I think it's around four hundred and seventy thousand or so for that grant. We think we have a good chance of getting it. We have a benefit cost analysis ratio of about point nine four on a scale of zero to one. And that really puts us in an advantageous position, saying, you know, what that tells the the grant sponsors is that it's a good value of their dollars to put into that facility. It's gonna add a lot of longevity to the building, it's gonna save the taxpayers a ton of money. I mean, to redo just the Southway alone, you're talking around four million dollars. And that's a chunk of change as a, as opposed to a a grant that wouldn't cost us anything and we can add another hopefully thirty to fifty years of life to the building. So, much like we did with DMS Northway. I mean, engineers say we added another fifty to sixty years of life to that building. And so that's an incredible value for the taxpayers. And to the school district. And, you know, we like keeping those historical buildings with all the history around also. It's just, thanks for great education and a great surroundings.
Good appreciation.
Yeah, absolutely, a lot of pride.
On the Innovative Learning Center, how's that coming along?
Extremely well. Um I'm sure Christie will be here sometime shortly to give you guys a report, but the last I talked with her, last year for the whole year, we served around a hundred students and granted over eight hundred college credits. In this fall term alone, there's a little over fifty students enrolled from last I knew. And I think there's a total of about four hundred and fifty credits that are, that are being uh worked on right now. And so I think you can see that it's just, it's growing at an exponential rate. And so I'm very pleased to see that. We have a lot of seniors at the high school that are enrolled in the ILC because they're, you know, they finished their graduation requirements, like take a few classes. Well, then why don't we get a jumpstart on their college education? And so they're enrolled and taking classes at the ILC. We have a few students enrolled in the advanced diploma program, that's going really well right now. And we're still at about thirty-nine credits is is what we'll be able to pay for scot-free to the students. We're also paying for their books. Um so they're gonna walk away at the end of the school year with thirty-nine credits and a transferable college transcript that they can transfer to another college or they can continue with their education at the ILC. Finish their double A degree and then move on or whatever they would like to do, so, pretty powerful stuff.
And on the flip side, the early learning and the YMCA preschool.
Yeah.
Any insights you have for us on that?
Sure, uh last I talked, Mr. Nash was kind of heading the charge on that. But he and I have talked a lot because I think all school districts have a vested interest in the academic level of incoming kindergarten students. And kinder readiness is a big push from the state right now in terms of where are we at, you know? And and we've seen the trend here, and it's also a statewide trend, that we're seeing over the last five to ten years more of a diverse range of ability levels. We're seeing students coming at the kinder level that, hey, they already know how to count on their fingers and does and can read some words and write a few letters, and they're ready to go. Um and we have other students that they're starting from square one. And I think the whole idea of the early learning is to try and bring everybody to more of an equilibrium level because that gives them that boost they need. Because the target is third grade reading proficiency and fifth grade math proficiency. And if we can get those students to those benchmarks, we're doing good. And it's very difficult for somebody to reach those benchmarks when they come in just from the the ground level at a kinder level. So um I know that there's some things that Superintendent Nash is looking into in regards to the YMCA. Um I know that he's requested some budget figures from the YMCA, he's gonna be taking a look at that. Um I'm very actively interested in bringing back the YMCA and/or equivalent of type of program. We need strong preschool programs here in the, in this particular, in the county, as well as the entire county. And we do have vested interest in that. And I think there's some of some things that could happen that that wouldn't be that difficult to to bring. difficult to, to bring those programs back.
Yeah, a great benefit to the kids, giving Head Start.
Tremendous benefit.
And also on Head Start, that's a small population.
Uh huh.
Mostly economic constraint. And then Head Start, you have the charge and that group that's in between.
Right.
How do we address that?
That's, you're exactly, you're exactly right. Because Head Start picks up that lower group, the upper group, well, they're already getting what they need, it's that middle group that we're really concerned about.
Have you ever had any ideas shared with us?
Well, I will. And I'll continue my conversations with Superintendent Nash on that. And again, I haven't had a conversation with him in a few weeks and I'm not sure where he's at with what he's working on, that I know he's working on.
I haven't talked to him in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah. I have a meeting with him this Wednesday, so I'm sure that I'll get some updates.
I find this chart here interesting. As you know, I'm a newcomer, much like you are.
Sure.
And Brad, he's a pillar of history.
Uh huh.
But back in, I use sixty-six because that's when I graduated.
Sure.
It took off.
Just, you know.
Yeah, for every good thing there was.
I was five years old in sixty-six.
Long before the mills and the economy and everything took a hit.
Yeah.
It was just over here.
Right.
It was already downward trend. And then there's the spike up. What was the factor of that spike?
I think last night we discussed that that was part of why was coming this way. They had that opportunity to bus over this way. And then, isn't that the section where the baiting boomers were most?
Productive.
There you go.
We also have five mills.
Five mills.
In other words, there was multi-electrical power outage that night.
Yeah, the Y-two-K influence has created a bubble in our street population. So, yeah, it is very interesting to look at the history and, you know, it's.
So, you get on down to the smaller spike, is that whenever a warranty correctional facility maybe came on? Pretty close to that time.
I think it was five.
It didn't happen at that time.
Didn't they come on in the early two thousands?
Two thousand and five, I think.
Two thousand and five.
Wasn't it two thousand and five?
So, that would be about right.
So that would be about right, yes, it would.
I believe that.
Yeah, yeah, that would be. And then, you know, it's just, I'm just pleased to see that we, the last three years, we're heading in the right direction. We're heading up. And I'm also very proud when I talk to parents and they say, yeah, we chose to stay here because we like the school district and the hospital and the community and, you know, it's very positive about this thing. And I think that's, that's just great for economic development.
I think, you know, we're very much federally based, quite a few federal jobs here and it's really becoming the trend for some of the federal employees come in for years and upward mobility. And that, that has to have an impact and a challenge for school.
Oh, yeah.
Kids coming through them.
Yeah.
I really always promote in the federal site for promotion from within and try to keep some of those people here, you know? But it's really the trend of the federal site is upward mobility. So, that will always, always happen here.
Yeah. And, you know, what we've noticed with that trend is we've noticed that we've overall, over time, we've kind of just continued to increase slightly because we're finding the, the ones that their children have already grown and we've got in the house, as they move on, what replaces them is younger families. And so, yeah, we may lose a few employees here or there or maybe lose a family with one or two children, but then what we get is a family with three or four or a young family that maybe has one in school, but they got three on the way that are below the age of five and, and so, we're actually kind of.
Actually, that upward trend was about when we bought a new planter on, wasn't it?
No comment.
Me neither.
Anything else for us?
No, I think that pretty much brings you up to speed with what's going on in District Seven.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your time. I appreciate our dialogue.
Appreciate you coming in. Yeah, nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you and work with Dave on that fence.
Yep.
And that's appropriate thing, get that straightened out, get that taken care of for your operations and.
It's the right thing to do.
And everything, so.
Yeah, but we appreciate your support with that.
Oh, yes. All right. Thank you, guys. Ms. Fran?
Yes, sir.
Tom and Dave, show us.
Again.
Again.
Well, you can just sit over there.
I don't need to be in the hot seat. You're in the hot seat.
Okay, we have an airport lease in Denham to be scheduled. And I'm slightly confused, so.
Slightly confused, okay, I'll go there.
And I never had a chance to get ahold of you yesterday, so Dave and I talked, so let's run through it and see what you have going for the decision, possible decision.
Okay, yeah. The big thing was is with, with the Connect Four program and Kyle was, you know, wanting to put, or said he would put some into the infrastructure around the hangar and stuff there. The, what they did do, they didn't, they didn't really keep track of, you know, scars, timer receipts kind of thing. But there was labor put into that that wasn't really kept track of. So, he wanted to try and do something to help out with that by donating a part of the truck there. And that's where that fifteen thousand dollars donation would come in.
You said it parted the truck, was that the front or the rear?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll set it up to him. So, but then there was ten thousand dollars that he was asking for towards the lease on the ground over the next few years. So, what it did for us, or what it, what it has already done for us, by having that truck there, we were able to get a full load of fuel, ten to, ten to eleven thousand gallons somewhere in there. And it all at once, so it reduced our cost by about twenty cents a gallon on fuel, over ten thousand gallons, which is huge. It also left us sitting this summer with the only ones in the whole area, Alturas, Clamath Falls, everybody, we're the only ones that had fuel to sell. We sold an extra four thousand gallons of fuel almost because that truck was sitting there. And nobody else, I mean, they had to fly whatever fire it was they were flying to us.
And Dave, what happened to the other fuel truck that we have that was covering this over several years?
It will cover it, but it's still less than what, you know, what we can get a full load before. And the other problem is, is we're, that truck is to the point where it's going to take another two, three thousand bucks to fix it to where it's even functional. I mean, the pump has quit working other than on the other side of the filter, so we have to bypass the filter to pump it in with our fuel tank now. The engine's junk. I mean, it just, you can barely keep it running, there's no brakes at all. So you roll it up to the fuel truck with the two thousand gallon fuel and throw a piece of wood for it. That truck is, so you got a huge expense just to fix a stupid thing. So.
No surprise to me, this is, this is the third, this will be the third fuel truck within my time.
Really?
Yeah, so I didn't really agree with the last one, but I was told it was to catch me out.
Yeah, well, it's, it's far from that, but.
Yeah.
You, you need to take a look at the truck that we got now. I mean, the truck is, it's a nice truck. It has been on a forest service contract, so it has to meet all that criteria.
And, and so, that, that's probably what my question is going to be mostly, but I got a lot of questions coming. Is, is those have to meet a standard to be able to be used. They have to be inspected and meet FAA requirements and everything.
Right.
Is this one here, all the pump, all the check valves and everything to compliance and?
Everything's to compliance except for the, the pump for us to sell out of the truck. The meter itself, that meter was set up, the, the forest service doesn't require a, a meter that's, that's for, you know, for retail. So it's just that, that meter needs to be updated. But then if we did that, we can sell the fuel out of the truck for, for another thirty cents a gallon, you know? So if somebody lands with a helicopter out in the field or whatever out there, we can actually go out and fuel out of that truck, but it will, it's going to cost them.
Do you have an idea of what it costs for them?
It's probably going to be around eight hundred bucks actually for the meter. And I really haven't dug into it too terribly much because, I mean, we're not to that point where.
So we don't fuel out of the?
That is a transfer tank only right now.
Okay.
Yeah, because we can't, we can't fuel out of it until legally, until we get that, that a big meter certified.
And, and I'm supportive of it, but I ask a lot of questions.
Sure, yeah.
So, how many more trucks are we going to buy before we look at, put a bigger tank in so we can just take the truck and trailer load? Because if it's just there to transfer or take, so we save money, what's it cost to upgrade our tank? And do away with the compliance and all the things, having a fuel truck there?
Right. Well, that's the, what the tank I looked into was about a, was an extra four thousand gallons almost, so it's pretty close where the truck is. But it was going to be twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars to get that plumbed in and up and running.
I, I, I would really consider that, Connect Six.
Uh huh.
Something like that, so that we can try it. Because it would eliminate man hours, it would eliminate all kinds of things if we do away with having to use a truck. I mean, it just makes operations more efficient.
Yeah.
If we can get to there. So I, I'd really consider that if we do another application on the Connect process.
Oh, sure. Yeah, it would be good to have, definitely have a bigger tanks to get us, you know, a full load without having to have the truck. The truck, you know, honestly, the truck's already paid for itself. I mean, what we brought in and kept in that truck, we're looking at probably about eleven thousand gallons. And, you know, that is, we have sold that plus this summer out of that truck, you know, just pumping it back.
Out of that old truck?
Yeah, out of that, yeah, out of our truck that we have now. I mean, the, the one, this one here.
With rotor.
We would not have had that fuel there to sell, is what I'm saying, if that truck had been there. So there's about thirteen thousand dollars of the fuel, so profit.
Profit.
Profit. So if we're only getting ten thousand dollars credit, we're already as a positive free, free grant. So, it is paid for itself in some.
Yeah, for the, our size of tanks, we have to have something.
Right. Well, and in the future, going on, hopefully by next summer, we'll figure out a way to get the meters certified. So when they come to certify the tanks, they certify the meter, now we're selling fuel directly out of the truck. We've got net jets that come in, they would be more than happy to have us fuel out of the truck instead of taxing up, because they can just park the airplane, walk away and say fuel our aircraft. You know, and there's those, a lot of the helicopters, forest service helicopters, they want to land down at the forest service, but they've got to, they've got to fly down, land, shut the aircraft down, which is a huge expense to them because every start on those engines is time on them. So, so they'd rather just pay us, you know, an extra twenty, thirty cents a gallon to come down there and fuel that aircraft. So, in a year's time, especially if we got a good fire season, we can, we can make an extra chunk of change with that.
Okay. What's the requirements for the operator of the truck? Is it CDL, hazmat, any certifications?
I'll double check on that.
Double check that.
My understanding.
If our insurance goes up because we're, we're actually fueling from a rolling stock and that type of thing.
Okay, yeah.
It shouldn't be too bad, I don't think, but we definitely want to make sure that whoever's running a fuel truck has the right certifications for the worst case scenario.
Well, every, every airport I ever been on, it's, it's been, you get Phillips training. So Phillips comes out and they do their training, which is every two years is a requirement. You get that training so you have certification. And then anybody can run that truck as long as it's done on the highway. As long as it's on airport property, then you, you're allowed to show that they have certificates, and yeah, they've been trained with the vehicle and you can pump it wherever you want on that. As long as you don't go out on the public road with it. So the hazmat and all of that, I mean, what, twenty, twenty-five years, I've never had to get a hazmat as long as I was on the airport property.
Just, just double check and make sure, not only for that's what our insurance requires.
Yeah.
Make sure on the insurance side, because that's where it usually comes down is the end, is the insurance says, well, we're not going to cover because you didn't have this, this, or this.
Right.
Just double check on that, I, I think would be just proving business.
Sure, oh, yeah.
I agree with, having a truck is, is a great benefit for those distant people. So even though we might want a new tank, we still need a truck.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think, especially as we get, as we get to growing, I mean, if everything is going to happen in the next five years, really happens with, you know, Red Rock and all that kind of stuff, if they've got people flying in and out, talking with, what's your name from the mine?
Oh, Linda.
Linda, yeah. Linda was saying, you know, they're, they're running eleven airplanes in and out of their mine down in Mexico, and they're looking at a couple free here at least. So if they're getting into any aircraft of any size at all, you know, depending on what they're running, that could be a huge benefit to have that there. Makes us a little bit longer, so.
I would add, what Commissioner Wanda said as far as a new tank on the next Oregon Connect, look at the big picture of what's needed out there.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll serve it down. I mean, it could be the tank or it could be something else, but.
Or all the, yeah.
Get everything on the table to cheese front.
Right. That's a good idea.
So my other, my other questions are, is where are we at on the final part of Connect Four, where this is going to be used as some of the match, I think is what I heard you say.
Yeah, Kyle originally, my understanding that, that Kyle had offered, I can't remember what the dollar amount was now, I think it was somewhere around ten or fifteen thousand dollars was the match that he was going to do originally. And then they did the pad improvements and some of the other, like the septic system, they ran ditch out and a bunch of stuff that was actually a part of the ground improvement rather than his hangar improvement. So, that's where the truck was going to show the donation of fifteen thousand dollars, you know, to go towards that plus whatever he's already done. It's just, so I don't know how much we'd want to use for match or if we can, you know, if we can even use any of that for match.
I don't know that we can, but it's Lake County's requirement to make the twenty percent match and we're meeting that right now. I think when you look at the overall project value, we can include it in that if ODOT wants those numbers, but right now as far as price cost and dollars on the ground, we wouldn't show that as a match.
That's what he's afraid of. Where are we at on closing out? How close are we to closing out?
We have a Bartel's invoice that's going out probably next week. That doesn't include the retainage amount because that'll happen after the final inspection. And then we'll have WH Pacific engineering costs to go out. I would say we're still probably three, four weeks away from final closeout.
And there's no way to, what I get from Kyle is he's, he had promised that he would have something to help with our maps at twenty percent through the construction of this, but you say this one qualifies to be part of that.
I don't know that a fuel truck will.
That's.
I think some of his ground improvements are what we can show if, if maybe, right now, we haven't, ODOT hasn't been looking at that because also the work has, you know, there's a start date, you couldn't start before then. Kyle's not in that scenario though. We can talk about it with ODOT and see if they want us to have those ground improvements listed as well.
But at this time, it's not needed.
No.
But being that with罗的did make that play.
Not, not needed, but it could reduce the actual cash that the counties have to need to go through. Economic development video dollars in our match, there is quite a bit of hard dollar match for, to make that twenty percent. So if we can reduce it by some of their time during the ditch or whatever, that saves dollars to the county, hard dollars. Which was the agreement that Kyle was supposed to?
Yeah, they should come up with.
Fifteen grand worth of match whenever we applied for the ODOT, Victoria Airport.
See, I never understood if it could be, if he had to come up with cash or in kind. And it seems like in kind stuff with ODOT is much different reporting wise. So it's going to, like I said, it's going to, it might increase the value of the project, but still we have to come up with twenty percent hard dollars for the ODOT dollars. So dollars that are going out the door, we have to have cash for twenty percent.
Yeah. My understanding was it was in kind, you know, so the labor for his people doing the, doing the groundwork, digging the ditches, that kind of stuff that they did was an in kind deal and not actual cash agreement. digging the ditches, that kinda stuff that they did was an in-kind deal and not actual cash agreement. Reading what I got in the, the agreement for that.
What is going on?
What else is going on? Man. We're, actually, the Michaels, the power company stuff going on right now, they've come to us. It was my understanding it was gonna be this year only, you know, but now they're saying it's gonna be for the next three years. So, they could be doing the same thing next year and the year after.
For three months.
For three months.
Three months of each year?
Yep, because that's the only time Bonneville's giving them permission to work on a certain section. So, they're gonna separate that. So, we're gonna see, we shouldn't see this same lease agreement for the next two, coming two years as well.
In the fall.
So, yep. So, that's a, that's a good thing there. You know, they're planning that, and they're happy with what's going on. It's, we got, the gate is almost done. My dad now had a stroke, so it really slowed down the finishing. And if, and if that's something that he can't do here pretty quick, I'm gonna just go get it and finish it. So, we'll make sure that that gets done. So, the, the holes are done for that and the fencing, I've just gotta get a trailer, go over and get this stuff up, so.
I have to go back to this, I did the two fees scheduled because this is an action item that we're working on tomorrow. On number three, down at the bottom, it says, Lake County report ten thousand dollars of seventy years' value towards property lease agreement to at current price per square foot.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think we need to change that current price to whatever, we may change to our fee schedule within the next seven years. What that student's locking in.
So, it's okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, because if it, if it does, as it raises.
Yeah.
Which, I'm trying to remember now, I'd have to look and see what we set that at.
At fifteen cents?
Yeah, but no, it's not due to, to an increase for a few more years.
Every two years, we can look at it.
Right.
And I don't know that, but this is for seven years, and I think we just need to reword that, that it will be valued at at the current, at the time of each year.
Sure.
What the value of the.
So, as the increases come, he just gets less rate for it.
And, and there may not be any increases, but it would be appropriate that we don't lock somebody in at the lower rate whenever all the other people out there leasing may be paying.
Oh, no, I understand that, yeah.
So, that's, that's my concern there, to have legal counsel look at that. Commissioner, Chester, you, what do you think of that?
Keep it current with our, what is it, CPI or whatever. What's your thoughts on it?
Well, yeah, I think it would escalate with the price that you set. So, current price just needs to be more clarified. Current price of, today's current price or something.
Current price is static.
Current price is, depends, current price at the time of rental agreement? I don't know.
Well, we can make that so it's adjustable though, that way, as the rate changes, yeah.
That it follows the rate changes, pretty simple to change that, pretty.
Okay.
Sorry to take you back, but I just want-
No, that's okay, finish that first. Yeah. David and I have been talking about the ceiling stuff, too. I've been trying to find the most effective way to get the ceiling and stuff and that without spending a ton of, ton of money. Because talking with Prescott and stuff, he's thinking that if we go with the standard sheet rock, you know, framed ceiling in there, it's gonna have to be engineered because of the width, you know, just for seismic activity stuff. So, we need to sit down, and I'll, I'll continue to get the options together with Dave so we can get our best option.
Get through three quotes.
Yeah.
Three different quotes.
Yeah. So, and I'm still waiting for Prescott to get these to me, and then we've got the one from Thornton. Yeah, so, we'll get, we'll get the quotes in, but I wanted to get some option, too, other than just, you know, if we're gonna have to pay for engineering and that kinda stuff, it's gonna get expensive in comparison. So, if we can find a fault ceiling, the bigger tiles than this, but something like that where we can put it in and still be able to blow insulation in, then, you know, sounds, looks like it'll be a little bit, quite a bit more affordable than having to board it in, so. So, that's kinda where we're at with that. We're just, this is the winter months here, we'll try to get that stuff wrapped up, so.
Hey, you'd come out and fix their door, put the supports in down below where it was cracking twisty. Come in and case it all.
Got that all finished, yeah?
Good.
And we, I got Vicki at the seat plane base there to give us a good, accurate recording of all the takeoffs and landings for the seat planes, because it sounds like it's gonna be kind of a trend to have two or three here instead of one. So, that's gonna increase our, our landing and takeoff load, which is gonna benefit with the FAA. Cause if we can get the numbers up where they need to be, then that gives us a higher criteria on, for grants. We can get a larger amount of grants, because they'll redesignate the airport, and we won't have the fight like we just had with the hundred-foot width on that. And with that, we're looking right now, we think we got final numbers that the FAA is agreeing to, they just gotta sign the paperwork. But where it started out at five hundred thousand and they dropped it to two hundred and thirty-four thousand, we're down to about twelve thousand dollars that is gonna come out of our pocket. And they're also saying that a portion of that is gonna be covered by our Connect Five grant. So, we might be right back down to our six thousand dollars that we originally, we said we'd need to have. So, we're a whole lot closer than what we were, and we're gonna still keep that hundred-foot runway, so. But at least we got the FAA to agree that, yeah, you can do this, yeah, we can see why. You know, the cut-up costed for the seventy-five-foot runway that aren't any different for a hundred-foot runway is justified, and we won't, you know, they'll cover that a hundred percent. So, we got a huge chunk hacked down. I mean, went from a half a million to twelve thousand right now.
Great.
So, we just need to get their official signature on the paper, so. So, hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have that, cause that was done, it was Thursday or Friday. That was, they, they had the final agreement between them and WH Pacific, and WH Pacific was giving them the paperwork to, for approval, so.
Have you heard anything from FAA on potential solar, with our lease option out there, solar next to the airport?
I haven't heard. We've got, I'm waiting on Andrew, and then Rain's at WH Pacific, since he's done a lot of those forms. So, he, he kinda jumped in there, and I said, well, what are you gonna charge us for that? He said, no, he said, I'll just do this one for you. So, he's gonna, because he's already jumped through the hoops on that, he's gonna just get his hands at it, too, so he can get this thing pushed through. So, hopefully we'll hear soon. And it's my understanding, and I haven't talked to Andrew about this yet, but as long as it's not within the, you know, our, our hundred-foot width on each side of the runway, or beyond that five hundred, or within that five hundred-foot area off the end of the runway, it's, it's more of a courtesy for us to tell the FAA, hey, this is what we're gonna do. And as long as it doesn't violate any of their law, then, then we're okay to do it. So, that's what we're in the process of doing right now, is they're confirming that we're not stepping into any of the operation area, which we're not. So, as soon as they've got confirmation and they're happy with it from there in, we've done our courtesy of saying, here you go, here's the form, you know, here's the approved stuff, and now they're just going, yeah. Okay. So, that sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's a, it's an issue.
Everything I researched, it looked like it, it's a good fit.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty good.
Yep, we, even the type of glass that they're using, you know, we had to confirm that that wasn't reflective glass. It's not, it's the matted glass, so, I mean, everything I, when I did the, they have a computer scale, model scale that you, that you build up and then put it in, and everything was in the green, there was nothing, even there's question of the yellow area. So, I mean, we should be good.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Raines and others have, have given, instrumentally, getting that seventy-five-foot, hundred-foot negotiation.
Oh, yeah.
And pass them our appreciation.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Definitely, cause, yeah, without, without them and Jeff Caines. Jeff Caines is a real big one, cause, cause WH Pacific was, well, this is what we got, this is how it's gonna be. So, it's, well, we can't afford to do that. So, then when Jeff Caines came back in, he kinda went back to Raines as well and said, hey, listen, man, we gotta figure something out. And at that point, they picked the ball back up and they started pushing it. And that's where we got, really got the credit back to where we're at, so, yeah. No, we, we'll talk with them, and we'll talk with Jeff at OMA, let him know, give him an ad, I want to pat him on the back for saying a few words, too, so, yeah.
Very good news.
Yeah, yeah.
So, when we're gonna get that thing up, rehab, next year?
Yep, should be, well, they're saying probably somewhere around July or August when we'll actually start seeing development. But then what, our Connect Five doesn't happen until September? But we're already in the process of getting the engineering portion of it started, so that's, that's in process. So, hopefully by April, May, the engineering will be done. And then at that point, then we can start, you know, figuring on how to roll actually physical work on the ground.
Once we start the physical work, then the aircraft would be used in the taxiway?
Correct, yeah. One of, one of the two taxiways. We'll, what we'll do is we'll build the, the one-seven and so the north end of the runway first. Get that done, and so that it doesn't shut down both taxiways. But as soon as we're clear of that area, then we'll open up that taxiway B over there and close down the other one. So, that what it'll do is it'll allow an open taxiway for, for a runway for the Forest Service and anybody else during that time, hopefully, without any interruption, any close down at all. So, and it'll be, you know, really, the taxiway in front of the hangar and stuff, that'll be the only hiccup is talking with the FAA about what they're happy with happening on that taxiway. Cause the other one was already designated a secondary runway, so that's not even a question, that was easy. But we don't have any answer. Sounds good as far as, you know, being able to use that taxiway for an alternate for a while, but we still have to get that final word from them on that. Front taxiway, the A taxiway in front of the hangar and all that, just because of width and, and everything, so. Yeah, so, I think we got through those hurdles, but there may be a surprise in there that we'll have to change when we, when they come and do their final after-engineering and all that, so.
Well, the, one of the questions I have, probably Tom, is it's easy to overlook Paisley. How, what is the condition there, and are we gonna build, get some slurry seal on that in the future? Are we gonna build?
I don't know if we're gonna get slurry seal on that in the future. The condition's been, it's pretty much stayed the way it's been. I mean, there hasn't been any real issues out there. We changed the sign that got shot up, and if I haven't been able to make it up there, you know, I've been talking to our, our pilots that'll take off and just go on a flight, and they'll land up there and, and make sure that everything's looking good. So, we've tried to keep as many eyes on it as possible, so.
Well, I, the pavement preservation is what I'm really worried about.
Right.
It's fourteen years, thirteen years old roughly now.
Right.
And we haven't, so, that's another one of the thoughts, Connect Oregon, possibly our, you know, FAA dollars that come in.
Right.
We need to look at the preservation on that.
Start getting that.
That asphalt. I mean, we're, we're right at the timeframe, just weather conditions and everything, it starts, starts to go.
Oh, yeah, and it's, we need to do it, we've just been focusing pretty much on making sure that everything is tied up here. This grant process was, it's not just, oh, you approve the grant, you know? To go, I mean, it's, there's constant phone call back and forth, you know?
Grants are not free.
Oh, no, absolutely, you earn every bit of it, don't you?
You do.
So, but, no, when we get that done, then, you know, yeah, definitely. And I, and I know the payment, we'll talk with Jeff, I need to talk with Jeff Caines about that, too, and see where we're at as far as development money for, for Paisley for the payment program. But it's been, yeah, it's been kinda low on the product.
Well, didn't they come in and, and start it, but then when things got cut back, they couldn't do it?
They couldn't do anything with it at all, we couldn't even get a crack seal, right? And then unfortunately, we didn't get our slurry seal here this year because of funding, you know, that the state thought they had and didn't have, so, but, yeah.
One other question, back on the fuel. What do we, what do we figure for shrinkage on the fuel? I mean, usually when you're taking a truck and trailer load, do we go through it pretty fast? And how do we keep track of it, the number of gallons and all that? I know they have the meters and everything, but do we put a number on shrinkage that we're gonna lose from?
We haven't really put much of a number on shrinkage that we're gonna lose. And a lot of it depends on the time of year as far as the temperature of the fuel. I mean, if we get it in the, in the wintertime, we gain in the summer, cause it expands. But it, it does expand enough, you can look at the, at the data we get from Phillips, you know, and they'll tell us that they've sold us eighty-nine hundred gallons or whatever. And if, as the temperature changes, we stick that tank, we'll have anywhere from fifty to eighty gallons variance on, on that. So, it does fluctuate on its own, just in temperature changes, so depending on the day that we stick it. You know, and that's how they audit that, too. When they come out and they audit and they stick it, you know, during the summer, it's gonna look like it has more if we got.
So, if you fill it during the summer, during the winter, you're gonna look like you have the rest?
Yeah, you could shrink fifty, fifty, eighty gallons or whatever. The only thing we, we look at shrinkage at all is sumping the tanks. We'll sump a half a gallon of fuel, you know, every week or two, to make sure that there's no water in the system. Well, that's technically, legally, by FAA standards, you're not supposed to put that back in the tanks. We've been using that for lawnmower, for weed eater, that kinda stuff. So, it's, it's not been, we haven't had to run to town to get fuel for, you know, for any of the, the operations stuff just because of that, and that's how we've been putting that to use. So, there really hasn't been any tracking of shrinkage. We have a, a meter reading that we, we read the meter at the time of the fuel purchase, and then periodically, every two weeks or so normally, we'll do another, we'll all go out and do a physical meter reading, and then we, we look at what we sold compared to what the meter is, and then we stick the tank to see. So, we're, we're always checking to see, you know, if we've got, suddenly somebody comes in and takes a lock off the tank and decides they're gonna siphon a hundred gallons out. We should be able to detect that pretty closely because of that. So, we try to keep that, you know, but as far as shrinkage, we really haven't, we haven't yet gotten a number that says, okay, we have, you know, a hundred gallons of shrinkage that we, that we lose. I don't have that, so.
I guess we can lynch off the hot seat.
So, I can go back and we can reword, or do you want legal to reword that so that there, there's a good?
Well, I'm not sure if I'm reading it right or, or wrong there. It says, where it says at current price, where, but I take that as today's price?
Yeah.
And I think it should be, I don't know exactly the right word.
Chester.
Yeah, because I can see where that could be business construed, because, yeah, cause current in four years may be different than current now. So, and if he reads that along and says, hey, wait a minute, I'm not gonna take them, yeah.
The current would go to whatever date that this was implemented.
That's the way I took it, so, that just needs to be redone. And then tomorrow, we, we.
Yeah, just ask, I'll leave the counter too, I'll put some food and language in there.
Okay.
What do you think the longevity of this truck, I mean, you put like zero miles on it there, or a few miles?
Yeah, I mean, even if it were water, this thing is still running so strong, I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna, I mean, I, I'm gonna give it ten, fifteen years, honestly. Cause it's just, we're not putting a ton of miles on it. When we do a fuel transfer, I mean, even if we took fuel every month, we'd be putting, what, two miles, two miles a month on it? So, as long as we're just keeping up on the basic upkeep on it. And it came to us, carted for the Forest Service, so, I mean, a carted truck has to have everything done.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's not like that piece of junk sitting out there that you hope you don't run across into an airplane cause you don't have brakes, you know? I mean, honestly, it's a.
I'm sure we'll be surplus in that somehow or some way.
But.
Did it pay for itself a little on haul?
Oh, I think so, yeah. I mean, it definitely did, because once again, you'd be paying for, by the gallon, if we wouldn't have had it stuck there. I mean, it did its job while it was there, but this is an opportunity to make even more money and to have something we can long-term use without going mad, you know? This is a two-man operation, just to get this one from point A to point B.
You can, yeah, wanted to make sure that, you know, the old truck was a piece of junk with all the things, it still wasn't.
Oh, it served its purpose, absolutely, yeah.
Is the tank usable for anything after we junk the rest of it?
Sure. Yeah, and back week of- Yeah, in fact, we could look into, I don't know, maybe we could use that as a stationary storage area for something as well. But, you know, I don't think we could tap that into, to the, our current tank we've got, that would be.
Or maybe you just get rid of it and our operations are efficient in good way, the new truck. Take our liabilities down to a minimum.
Right.
Look at all options.
Right.
And then take the best one.
But then, yeah. But that was, you know, that was my thing. I, I saw the potential with this to actually make money for the airport this year, and it's already done that. And, and it's going to be good for, for at least ten years, I think, without having to do anything but just basic upkeep on it, you know? And it's, we can make even more money if we put the money into the meter system. So, I mean, it's kind of a win-win because.
I would recommend getting the meter system taken care of right away.
Oh, yeah.
Whenever you're able to charge that much more per gallon, pay for that meter in very short time.
Right. Oh, yeah. And then it, and it's a convenience thing, you know? And people like that convenience. I mean, twenty cents a gallon for fuel when you're flying a ten million dollar jet, really doesn't even come into play. They don't care, just get it done, you know?
They just don't want to handle it, they just, you know, somebody else do it. Yeah, I, I would put that as high priority.
They pass eight hundred bucks.
Good. So we'll figure that out.
Take out my savings?
Yeah. Buy that thing I saved it for, that's okay.
But yeah, because it's a delay.
I'll get you doing it.
Yeah, that should be.
You're burrowing my.
I did turn the light on.
All right.
I know, is it, huh?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're okay. What's that?
I gotta say to the next.
You do, huh? Okay.
Our addition, ski hill thinning slash rack grant.
So you had a contract before you from T W C Corp, which is Collins Companies. They will be doing a logging and commercial thinning project on Warner Creek and Ski Hill for the Fremont Highlanders. Since we are the owner of the property, the rack grant in this contract is with us, so. To give more information, the Fremont Highlanders has met with Collins out there on site and found out that there is quite a bit of material that.
Marchburg material?
Yep, will be logged. And with that fact, they will do the visible areas this fall and then go back next spring and summer and finish up the western, western slopes, which means the final cleanup of the site that we would use Warner Creek for will be late next summer probably.
For the slash?
Yeah. Legal counsel did review this contract. He pointed out three things. The first thing he pointed out was the initial date on the original contract was December thirty-first this year. Lee changed that once they recognized how much material they have. So now that contract you're looking at goes through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. The second thing legal counsel pointed out was that the county is responsible for reforestation if we were required to do that since we are the landowner. And then the third thing he pointed out was corrected, item twenty was left blank and legal counsel said please delete that or put an A in there and that's what Lee later adopted.
Well, the reforestation, we checked with the Department of Forestry to see if that would be required. It's on a stem per acre basis.
Collins did the, um, permit with the Department of Forestry. So I'll ask Lee what our requirements are on that. Cause I'm not sure they handled that process.
So we're able to bid for the landowner. It's required for us to be the sponsor, I guess you'd call it, or the applicant. Can we be the applicant as the county where we're the ones that put the percentage that is going to go into, um, the.
The rack percentage?
Yeah, the title too.
Cause they, cause they signed off on all of it.
They signed off on it?
Yeah, the federal government awarded us the rack grant. We got a notice to proceed, Lee has gone, gone through all the hoops with them. They wanted to make sure we did not profit. That was a stipulation, that's why we're not selling the logs to Collins. Collins is basically doing the logging and they're paying for the cost of the logging. And then their repayment on that is selling the logs themselves. We have to pay them for the commercial thinning though, because there's no value in the commercial thinning.
Pre-commercial.
Pre-commercial, thank you.
And then we don't know about reforestation, which could be a cost also.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check with that. I would, I would hope on a ski hill, there's not a lot of reforestation. Sorry, just going to throw that out there, but.
Well, it depends on how many of these stems were able to be out there. And if not taking everything, then what's remaining may count for that stems per acre.
Okay.
I, I believe that we're going to be able, I, I should say, I believe it'll be okay on reforestation because of, this is more of a thinning project that will enhance our standard timber there, so. There we have it. All right. I know Commissioner Shand put a lot of time in this, he'll probably have some to add tomorrow in our meeting. And thank you. Take five, five minutes break, how do you grab Larry for the airport lease or not for the airport?
We'll leave that, we'll stop the next skip.
Take five minutes break. Come back at ten twenty. Have, do you guys track the number of individuals that goes in and view the video or?
It's kind of being tracked by itself. If you go into the video and it's on like the bottom, right? It says number views, so footage just shows, don't get that many hits on it. It's like ten to twenty, I think, so.
Do you have a list, if we can track who they are?
Yeah. I, I don't think that's possible, but.
NSA you don't know. We're going to have to these connect things, we're going to have to, it's just like open, but. How are you liking Lake County?
All right. Small.
Is what?
Small.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
But there's a lot of things to do and.
You know, it depends, it depends on a person's, uh, what they want to do or whatever. If you're outdoors type person, it's unlimited, you know? If you, if you like shopping and going out to dinner, very limited.
Morning, Chris.
Morning. Me and my wife, we, on our thirty-sixth anniversary, we had some things to take care of. Go see your dad south of town and stuff. We driving through town, it's seven thirty. Nicest place we could find to have dinner as we drove through Burger King. Because it's on a Monday, everything else is closed. And so you're limited to take your wife out for dinner. If you want to just any day of the week, go out. So those things, that's, I sort of laughed at that, it's sort of like, yeah.
Well, if you like burgers, then it's a good place to be.
No, yeah, yeah.
Restaurant has burgers.
Burgers are Subway, Subway still stays open pretty late, nine or ten.
Well. Safeway would expand even with the deli and that stuff, it'd be nice.
So awesome.
Be really nice.
Anytime I go to that one in Clamath, I'm like, oh, this would be so neat.
On Knott Road, around on the bend, on the backside of that Safeway there, their Chinese food is to kill.
Same way in Clamath, I would do it better with the, several, it's good, it's like five dollars.
Yeah.
And you get, you know, like they do in Chinese places, you get two meals. Who could eat all this? My little wife, that little girl, she can eat a pile of rice this day every day. And I'm not kidding, I, I'd do it like, you know, I have a little thing like that. She has half her plate full of rice. That's how they get their energy, I guess.
Yeah.
She told me.
That's what they raised on.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to come back in session at ten twenty. Our next item is O D F and W property tax notification, this Sussar, very recent.
This is the annual, we, we send them a bill in lieu of taxes, basically the taxes on properties they have, unlike other.
This is specific to the Summer Lake Refuge, or is it larger?
I don't know if it's just restricted to Summer Lake Refuge, not whatever property they have in Lake County.
Yeah, it's all their properties.
Other, other Department pays a lot.
Right. Cause apparently they're not exempt like other federally owned lands. So they get this bill and it's in lieu of taxes, a little bit different, it's, it's just the taxes on those accounts. But still, this is how we've been handling it for years and annual thing.
Commissioners probably locate a Summer Lake.
Summer Lake.
So Larry, do we need to accept this formally or anything?
Yeah, we've always, the Sussar's office has always had the commissioners sign off on it. Okay, go ahead and bill them.
We have it on the agenda for tomorrow, so we can accept this for the question, uh, tomorrow. Reg Raveen.
Yeah. That's good, today's the, what, fourteenth? Yeah, it has to be out to them by the fifteenth, so that's good, that's perfect. We assign it, we'll send it down.
Well, we.
We better do it today then.
Yeah, cause we're in Christmas Valley tomorrow.
Oh, okay. I wanted to say that's true too. Even better.
So I was, Mr. Kessner, let's go ahead.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the payment lieu of taxes and the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eight dollars and thirty-two cents for the year twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen tax year. Whoops. I strike that. With the three percent discount amount of taxes, I move to approve the payment lieu of taxes for the year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Are they going to do it? I have two different numbers in front of me, but I'm struggling with it. Are they going to do the, the three percent discount?
Yeah, they always pay with the three percent discount.
Okay, so back to my original motion.
The amount that's on there though is the amount with the discount.
Three percent, it should be, uh.
Yeah, basically, on this page, the tax amount is nine thousand four hundred and ninety-three. If you pay it early, three percent discount down to ninety-two hundred.
That's correct.
That's right.
So that will be my motion to accept the payment lieu of taxes. That will reflect that amount if paid with a three percent discount. If not, it would be the four.
Second.
The copy that needs signed can pass.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll take that off the agenda for tomorrow, Denise. Larry, thank you.
My understanding on the history of that is that when the O D F wanted to buy up a lot of property, Michael Wildlife Refuge, County Commissioner says not without paying taxes, so that's one of those reasons.
Okay, Department of Dates, we don't know that we have any, unless Denise has something she would like to.
I have special transportation pretty much for the whole, next week, Jeremy will be on site Thursday, Friday. We're going to be with our providers and go over where they're at on their programs. And then next, starting Sunday through Wednesday, I will be in Seaside at the O dot conference. Going over special transportation items and looking at dance, so that's pretty much it.
Okay. Ladies on the peaks, the governing ladies on the peak, Commissioner.
Continue on the Motu grant opportunity. Last Monday night, I met with the North Lake Health District Board of Directors, see if they have projects per se. And, you know, that piece of property right behind the new clinic where the old motor trailer used to be. And went down, took a little bit less than eight and a half, just to the right side of the clinic. It's been their emphasis to put a recreation or facility there, indoor recreation. Everything from yoga to physical therapy, to basketball hoops, to mini chow, soccer indoor field. So I met with them and they had that already in vision and we're going to see if we can incorporate that into that Motu grant opportunity for the northern part of Lake County. Also, I talked with Department of Rack. Having an outdoor, uh, fitness path is a high desire item in the northern part of the county. And they are, first off, maybe a walk around the lake, but the boundaries private property permits it, but very tight, very costly. So they're looking at, you know, with that little peninsula sticks out, that used to be all developed and got benches and everything, water fountains. Always just overgrown because they haven't had money to upkeep. So they'd like to redo a new trail into that and up the golf course. So this afternoon, I'll be meeting with Betty Riley, John Adams, and a lady named Jessie DuBois. Was working on trying to put projects together for this grant and we'll try to incorporate those things.
Well, this grantism for projects is for master plan of the.
No, separate.
Separate.
We got a grant to do with Ann and others working. They got the Parks and Rec, State Park and Rec, uh, grant to do a master plan for the county park and rec master plan. That's, U of O students will do that starting January and should finish up in June. This is the Motu, the insurance through Oregon Education Benefit Board, O E B B, who provide insurance for teachers. And Motu, this is the Oregon Dental Service, is the insurance person or entity that provides the medical insurance for the teachers through O E B B. If you remember about a month or so ago, I was called up to Department to present projects. And it was given like, for Eastern Oregon, cause M O D A had given O E V B three million dollars a couple of years ago to put out for grants, medical related, health related. They've already spent half of that three million dollars, mostly Western Oregon. So, I was called up to represent Eastern Oregon, and after a meeting, I said, is it Eastern Oregon, or is it Lake County? They said, the vice president of M O D A said, we're looking at Lake County. We know your interests, and your desires down there, and your needs, give us no time limit to get the application in, but we need to get it in reasonable. And no dollar, and no guarantee of acceptance either. So, what I've been working is trying to get a project for Southern Lake County, based on nutritious health. Cause you're looking at the formative years kids and physical activity. Physical activity is a big priority through the chip program, both Northern Lake and Southern Lake. The nutritious aspect wasn't identified, but it's still an important component of healthy kids that go on to be better at learning and education. We haven't solidified anything on the southern end yet. We're looking at a commercial kitchen, helping the Early Learning Council for Innovation Center. Maybe helping them to disclaim to fund a commercial kitchen that people can go and, you know, supplement their cuisine courses. And also, where people can go, sort of do, and do stuff like that.
So, there's monies available, there's grant opportunities, and in Northlake, I would, apparently, the parking wreck's one that would apply. And then whoever entity that would do the project here would apply, you're just trying to promote or get them to apply?
Yeah, and once we get it, it only needs to be a two to four page, not, not an in-depth project, dealing with just a concept. How we grant money, we use to help get us started, and who's gonna sustain it.
Okay, well, does that money flow through the county, or does it flow through the applicant?
We haven't got to that point with M O D A, that's been on my mind, I've talked to Ann. We could be the banker and pass it out, or we could promote each entity to do their own.
Well, if it ends up being the, the county, always look at what it indicates rate of cost.
Well, if it's county doing it, then we, we can quasi-responsible and ensure the projects, that the individual applicants get their projects done.
Well, the grant, the grant will dictate who's available or are allowable, and if it has to be a municipality or a taxing district, or whatever, for it to go through.
First off, we'll just get a concept of different projects rolled into one, and then I'll go back up to Department, sit down with that vice president of M O D A. And negotiate how it's gonna, how they work it, how they work it with others, as a matter of nature. How it's gonna be moved greatly different than most of the others that they have already given out. There's always been site-specific, one individual party, we're looking at multi-parties, so it's gonna be a little more complicated, but we haven't got there yet.
Sounds like you got your work cut out for you.
You know, I hate going to Portland, but this last trip for the early learning metrics, I find, you know, there's metric tools, understanding tools. And, you know, trying to get the idea of what's this metric stuff, you know, its outcomes. But anyway, I hate going to Portland because of the traffic, but this past time, I was able to find the classic music for radio station. You made it all worthwhile. I even called up and made a big donation. The other thing, from the Portland early learning hub metric, me, since I was in that area, there was a juniper utilization conference going on in Salem. A O C and Oregon Business and everybody else are engaged in that, is basically, how do we utilize all this juniper? What we did announce, cutting, stacking, burning, and you know the value of juniper, it's really nice wood. There's, there's a niche market out there for it, and this conference was, how can we get through various, like, Oregon Department of Forestry you cut so many acres, you have to go in and replant or do something like that. Anyway, lots of things, but this conference is, it's been going on for a while, I didn't hear about it till about a month and a half ago, so, stopped in on the way home to just see what they was, what their kids know with. And Villa County, Chris Perry, the judge up there, they put in one of these Ralph Works grant to help promote commercialization, use, utilization of juniper, and they're probably getting it. There's this father-son team out of Canyon City, John Day area. They got contacts all through that region of Oregon with landowners and government, whatever, to go in and harvest juniper for this, for this niche market. But they had no contacts down in Lake, and so I came in on Saturday and gave them the list of about fifteen different individuals. Maybe, like, right now, through the N R C S, Sage Roust Initiative, they entered a contract with the landowner. My neighbor sat on the plush cut off road to go in and eradicate juniper for Sage Valley restoration. If this, people can come in before all the juniper get chunked up in little pieces, and be able to capitalize on the merchantable pieces. And then turn it over to S L S. So, it's, it could be a, an extra little economic boost to the county, if we can utilize that instead of burning.
There's quite an operation in Hardy County, too.
It's limited in capacity, but that'll only save money.
I would love to see it for railroad ties, be advised here for railroad ties. I, I have a, gee, is that all you have? I have a ten-thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and recess the meeting until this afternoon at two o'clock.
Just determined one thing.
What?
On Friday, October twenty-fourth, it will be Lake County's hundred and fortieth birthday.
Catch of that.